Good evening, everybody. We're going to call our meeting to order. I'm going to have a roll call by our City Clerk, Kathy Valdez.
The records shall reflect that all members are present.
If you'll all rise, we're going to have a pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Rigby.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with that, hold on. Well, the Saturday, December 7th was Pearl Harbor Day. Let us take a moment to reflect and honor the military and civilian dead and the thousands of others who survived the attack on Pearl Harbor 78 years ago. These individuals demonstrated remarkable resiliency, courage, and teamwork even when still under attack. The spirit, determination, bravery, and resolve of these heroes stand as a model for all Americans throughout the ages. We owe them a depth of gratitude, and I would like to just honor them this evening, or this evening, still evening, isn't it? Yeah, this evening. So I just think it's a thing that we could do, just have a moment to reflect and honor And with that, we'll go on with our meeting. And in accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buena Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buena Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. I'd like to remind everyone that the Vista Municipal Code requires members of the public to observe order and decorum at the meeting and to conduct themselves in a courteous manner. The ordinance was adopted to allow for public input and to facilitate city business without disruption of the meeting. A applause is appropriate for the items listed under the presentation portion of the agenda only. Attendees should remain seated during the meeting, and persons needing to stand are requested to step outside the city council chambers where video and audio of the meeting are playing. This is also listed on our agenda cover sheet. The students wishing to receive credit for attending this evening's meeting must stay for a minimum of one hour. However, we ask that you stay for the completion of an item rather than leaving in the middle of a discussion. When you're ready to leave, you can ask one of the sheriff deputies or a staff member in the back of the room to sign your paper. So last night, we had lots of, there was a meeting that had lots of students, not so many tonight, I don't see out here. To speak on an item on the agenda, please fill out a speaker slip with the number of the item you want to speak on and give it to the City Clerk Secretary. Speaker slips are available just outside the city council chambers. And so with that, I go to the approval of our agenda. City Manager Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes this evening.
And our city attorney, Darryl Piper, will bring us out of our closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council did meet in closed session to discuss item CS1 on this evening's closed session agenda. No action was taken that's required to be reported.
Okay, that brings us to our consent calendar. The recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar, and any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the Clerk Secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the calendar. And we have 20 consent items this evening, and so with that, we have one item pulled, C14, pulled by a speaker. And do I have any items pulled by our council? If not, I would entertain a motion for the balance of the consent calendar, minus C14.
I move to approve the balance of the consent calendar.
Councilmember Rigby?
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. So that brings us to item number C14, and we'll hear the speaker first, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Kathy. Yeah, is this where you guys are appointing officials for the upcoming year, for these boards? Sandag, North County Transit? Do I understand that correctly?
Do you have a question?
Yeah. The question is, are you appointing these, your positions for the upcoming year? And yes, they are, for the 2020 year.
And then to follow up with that, who is A and who is B?
I can't, you have to, can you speak in the microphone? Can you speak clearer? I'm not understanding what you're saying. I'm sorry.
Yeah, who's going to be appointed to represent us on Sandag?
We have three of us, actually. I'm the person that will represent you, and then we have an alternate, Councilmember Rigby and Councilmember Green.
Okay. And then also, North County Transit Board is the same representatives there? Franklin?
Right. That's correct.
Yeah, this is like a big one. I mean, maybe it's just because I was driving on the 78 today, and there's just like a ton of traffic. And in general, civilization kind of like breaks down in traffic, and people don't treat each other as well. So, I mean, this is like a huge priority for our city and for our region at large. So I'd ask those four of you that did get appointed to this boards, boards, to take this issue with the most seriousness. For example, you know, I would appreciate it if Councilmember Franklin actually kind of used the North County Transit System as a way of sort of finding out the faults and ways we can improve upon that. And, well, with Sandag, I mean, good luck. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I would need a motion for item C14. Councilmember Rigby?
I'll move that we approve item C14 as presented.
Okay, I have a second?
Second.
Okay, please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. That brings us to our public hearings. We have three public hearings this evening, and the first public hearing is to receive testimony regarding amendments to Title V of the Municipal Code relating to cannabis enterprises, Title 18 of the Development Code, and the Vista Business Park Specific Plan relating to cannabis-related uses, and extension of a moratorium relating to cannabis-related uses. So the public hearing is now open. Community Development and Engineering Director John Conley will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The cannabis amendments, as I'm calling them, are before you this evening. Staff received direction in August of this year to allow for some changes specifically within the Vista Business Park Specific Plan, to allow for testing facilities, to allow for up to two manufacturing facilities with a special use permit, up to two distribution facilities with a special use permit, all within the Vista Business Park for cannabis-related businesses, and allow for cannabis delivery within the city. So the staff is proposing a number of amendments tonight that are before you to fulfill this direction. So first of the Development Code amendments, those are the chapters 1802 and 1806 of the Development Code. This would remove the blanket prohibition against cannabis-related uses that we established, and with the changes that were brought by Measure Z would clarify the definitions and uses within that portion of the code, but would prohibit all, or continue to prohibit all, other cannabis-related uses. Within the Vista Business Park Specific Plan, which is area-specific, the Area B, which is the light industrial zone, would allow unlimited cannabis testing facilities, up to two cannabis distribution facilities with an SUP, up to two manufacturing facilities with an SUP, all following the council's direction. These distribution, manufacturing, and testing uses would follow the state of California's definitions and categories. This is a map of the Vista Business Park Specific Plan. Area B, which is in white, surrounded by red, is the light industrial and business support group. These are the areas that are light industrial zone that would allow the testing, manufacturing, and distribution uses. The areas D, A, E, C, and F, the other colored areas, would be excluded.
Just for clarification, are all of these uses required to obtain a special use permit?
Only manufacturing and distribution. The testing use would not require a special use permit.
And what was the, what's your thought on why we would not require a special use permit?
That was just the direction that we received from the council in August.
Is there any reason that you can think of, in your capacity, why we would not want an SUP?
For testing?
Yes. For all of the uses.
The discussion, if I remember, in August was that testing would occur in sort of a laboratory setting. It would be like an R&amp;D type of a use. It wouldn't allow a heavy use of the product itself, and there wouldn't be a lot of cannabis you'd have to deal with, and so an SUP seemed to be more than what would be needed. And for clarification, there's licensing requirements that will go along with these uses that will also apply to these testing facilities, so there's layers of regulatory review. We thought a special use permit was just at the staff level too much because it regulates use, and the use is fairly benign.
What about conditional or a minor use permit? Either of those make sense?
You could certainly impose that. A conditional use permit is the same for us as a special use permit, so a minor use permit would be an administrative review of the similar issues.
I'd like to suggest that we consider a minor use permit if that's a significantly lower threshold but still gives us some administrative purview. I'd just like to know, I'd like to, I'd like these businesses to walk in an application and for us to know who they are and understand what they're doing and, you know, be, I'd like us to have a relationship. So if there's no reason that we can think of why we wouldn't want to do an MUP.
Okay.
Can we let them continue their report, and then we'll talk about that when we get through?
Sure. At the current time, what's recommended is that testing would not require a use permit. Excuse me. We're also recommending some changes to the Municipal Code to address the licensing of delivery, and these would require, include requirements for a delivery service license for the business itself, certain operating requirements for the cannabis delivery services like hours of operation, insurance requirements, et cetera, driver work permits to verify that they have valid licenses and are of age, and allow for inspection of premises and records by city staff. There's also changes to Chapter 5 of the Municipal Code to add 5.98, which would address the licensing of testing, distribution, and manufacturing facilities, also known as cannabis enterprises. This would also include a license of the facility, would also address operating requirements for the enterprise uses, the types of the hours that they could operate, and the types of facilities they could operate within. They would have employee work permits to, again, verify age, and it would allow for inspection, again, of records and premises by the city. For Councilman Franklin's clarification, this is sort of what I was alluding to before. There are layers of reviews, so the licensing would still apply to the testing facility, but the land use control of a use permit we didn't feel was necessary. We're also recommending an urgency ordinance to extend the current moratorium on cannabis-related land uses until the code amendments take effect. Our current moratorium expires today, and the extension would cover the time period until the amendments to the Development Code take effect. The extension of the moratorium would require a four-fifths vote. Zoning amendments require formal recommendation by the Planning Commission prior to council's consideration. The commission reviewed this request in November of this year and recommended, sorry, there's a typo there, of this year, and recommended that cannabis manufacturing and distribution facilities established within the business park be located at least 600 feet from any residentially zoned property. So I have a, come back to this. I have a visual that shows, Kathy, can you take me to the last slide, which includes these areas that are the business park locations that would be appropriately zoned within 600 feet of residential. These are at the corner of South Melrose, which runs north-south along the left, and Sycamore, which runs along the top. If we could go back, I'm sorry. Thank you. So the formal staff recommendations are to continue the moratorium, amend the Development Code, amend the Vista Business Park Specific Plan, and amend the Municipal Code, adding the two chapters to Title V. And we will also have licensing requirements, permit fees for the licensing requirements. It'll come back in early 2020 for your review. And that completes my staff report. Thank you.
Okay, I have seven speakers, so I take the speakers first.
Can I just clarify, just not commenting on, but clarifying? So that, could you back up that map that you showed within 600 feet of residential? Okay, so right there, so I'm, what are you telling us about this zone? Which zone letter is that?
This is the area within the Vista Business Park Specific Plan that would allow for testing, manufacturing, and distribution, but is within 600 feet of residential. So per the Planning Commission's recommendation, if you were to adopt their recommendation, these parcels that are outlined in red would not be able to have any of those uses on their site.
Okay, I certainly support that. And then just further clarification, so you're saying we are requiring a license from the city that does give us administrative purview?
Over their operating requirements and their-
Separate from an MUP.
-security, et cetera. Yes, there's a number of provisions in the code amendment before you that address that.
So we'll still be able to place conditions on the operators?
Per the licensing requirements.
Right, okay. And that's for all of these types of businesses?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I will, okay, the speakers? Okay, we'll start with Becky Rapp, and if, I'll call three of you, and if, one will come up to stand, and the other two will wait over here. So it's Becky Rapp, followed by, looks like, Rhianne Fletcher, and then, Fatima Ashak? Is it Fatima, maybe? Okay.
Okay, good evening. My name is Becky Rapp. As a parent and community member, I support the moratorium. However, I have great concern with the idea of changing Municipal Code that could possibly create leniency for the marijuana industry, or more marijuana businesses in town. I feel like the city is making decisions based on assumptions and not facts. Two of the 11 marijuana outlets from Prop Z have opened just recently, and it is still very early to know what community problems, neighborhood nuisances, and calls for services by code enforcement and the sheriff there will be. Vista citizens and city council members need that information before they consider regulation for other types of marijuana businesses. We do know, though, through experience with illegal operations, Vista has seen an increase in service calls to the Sheriff's Department and the Commission of certain types of crimes, including break-ins, illegal cultivation, processing, and manufacturing, all associating with environmental damage. I would suggest you give these decisions more time. Wait and see what ramifications come from decisions that have already been made. If you're interested in facts, I would highly encourage you to consider opening testing facilities. We still don't have any permitted facilities in San Diego County, and it's very important for the products for manufacturers to be tested. Vaping cartridges have been proven to be very dangerous. According to the CDC, marijuana vaping cartridges tested found the vapors they produced were filled with high levels of pesticides and other harmful substances. One of the products, Maui Wowie, contained 15,000 times the legal limit of pesticides. Antonio Frazier, the Vice President of Operations at the Los Angeles Cana Safe, one of the nation's leading marijuana testing firms, said, "I'll be willing to bet that some of these are over what they would consider a fatal dose." He added, "People don't die from smoking a pack of cigarettes, which is what we're seeing with some of these vape products. People are actually dying over a month of use. I ask you to send a message to the community that you are more interested in the public's health and safety. Any marijuana businesses should be carefully located as possible in relationship to where youth congregate. 600 feet from a residential community park or youth-oriented facility or other sensitive use business is way too close. Send a message to the people that you will protect the youth by creating larger distances." I have a handout with those, with that information, with those facts that I said in the talk. Thank you.
So Rhianne, followed by Fatima, followed by Jessica Palmer.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rhianne Fletcher, and I'm the Media Specialist with North Coastal Prevention Coalition, it's also known as NCPC. And NCPC is, the mission is to reduce the harm of alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, and other drugs in the city of Vista through community action, education, support, and collaboration. Now, looking at Vista's 2030 General Plan under the Healthy Vista Element, the goal number one states Vista will work with community partners to improve overall health and wellbeings of Vistaans. We want to be that resource for Vista to help educate the public for potential public health risks associated with marijuana deliveries, distributions, and manufacturing facilities in Vista. As you may know currently, that the League of California Cities are suing the California Bureau of Cannabis Control due to home delivery services, with concerns of robberies, easier youth access, and potentially an increase in illegal sellers blending in with licensed delivery fleets. Now, I believe that the city of Vista would benefit by waiting to see if these legal cases turn out, and before making further policies to increase marijuana policies, to help enforcement address illegal marijuana deliveries businesses, and to give law enforcement the proper tools to handle these specific issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Fatima, followed by Jessica Palmer, followed by Kathleen Lippett.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Fatima Ashak, a prevention specialist with the North Coastal Prevention Coalition, known as NCPC, and a resident of Vista. I've worked in the alcohol and other drug prevention field for the last seven years, and during the time, I've seen tobacco and marijuana products transformed to be very profitable and appealing to youth. When talking about manufacturing marijuana products, it's very important to note the new epidemic associated with the outbreak of vaping. I think we're all familiar with that. According to the CDC and the FDA, this outbreak now has a name, and it's called e-volly. The CDC recommends that people should not use THC-containing e-cigarette vaping products. As of last week, the CDC reported 48 deaths contributed to e-volly. Just four days ago, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health reported six people having vaping illnesses from vaping products purchased from licensed marijuana dispensaries. Just because it's legal doesn't mean it's safe, and I think it's our job to make sure moving forward that we do the best we can to make it as safe as possible. It's our duty to protect youth and make sure Vista doesn't become the beacon of youth marijuana use. We think there should be a ban on THC vaping products in Vista. Adopting total smoke vape-free outdoor policies can help prevent second- and third-hand smoking exposure and help reach your Healthy Vista Element Policy 1.8 outlined in your 2030 General Plan. We hope you lean on us as a resource, and we would appreciate an opportunity to collaborate on putting Vistaans' health in the forefront. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jessica, Jessica Palmer, followed by Kathleen Lippett, followed by John Jesse.
Hi, I am Jessica Palmer. I am a senior at Ranch of Buena Vista High School. I'm also Vice President of the Public Policy Club, and we work in direct connection with North Coastal Prevention Youth Coalition. And it's my job here today to bring the youth into this equation, and I think that the youth isn't being considered enough in these regulations on marijuana. And I'm concerned about the increase in use with my peers, and I think that these locations, especially in close proximity to residencies and schools, is not helping this epidemic that's occurring with underage students and youth. And I just want the council to consider the youth when discussing and considering specific policies and regulations on marijuana. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen Lippett, followed by John Jesse, followed by Gianni Ramirez.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. My name is Kathleen Lippett. I'm a mother of two adult children and two grandchildren, and I'm a public health practitioner for over 20 years. As an advocate of sound public policies that support good choices and maximize, that maximize academic and career opportunities of youth, enhance workplace safety, road safety, physical and mental health of residents, and productivity. The commercialization of marijuana businesses increases increasing access to a drug that undermines all of these qualities of life. By allowing the production, access, sale, and distribution of marijuana couldn't be more antithetical to a sound public health policy. Marijuana profiteers, attorneys, advocates, and aficionados entice electeds to cooperate with the marijuana industry's campaign to normalize marijuana. For reasons of financial gain, whether in the form of campaign assistance, promises of windfall taxes, promises that marijuana operators would follow every rule and regulation the city might impose, promises of product safety of responsible marijuana operators and operations, unpermitted shops would close, although providing no historical evidence for that to happen, in fact, the reverse is true. Medicinal marijuana businesses also leaves the door open for 18-year-olds to buy, use, and divert to other peers and younger teens. Regarding the city's distance requirements from sensitive uses, 600 feet is a very short walk. The average residential lot can be about 100 feet, so that's about six houses. Two significant sensitive uses that cities typically fail to respect are treatment and recovery centers, and I would respectfully request that those sensitive uses be added. It is very concerning that Vista only just started to deal with the marijuana outlets. Adding two marijuana production facilities and two delivery services before your testing facilities are in place, certified testing facilities, seems unwise. With all the news of the lung injuries and deaths from vaping and warning from the CDC, I would like to point out that it is these marijuana manufacturing facilities that are the sources of these products. And contrary to earlier contentions that those problems were limited to illicit manufacturers, it turns out that the permitted ones are as culpable. Though some electeds have been led to believe that regulating will assuage marijuana attorneys and prevent litigation, or allow the city to remain in control of the issue, the reverse is true. Some cities have naively invited marijuana consultants from the industry who convince them to adopt a strategy called development agreements. In reality, these are agreements which will take away your local control permanently. Thank you.
John Jesse, followed by Gianni Ramirez.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. My name is John Jesse. I am one of the four licensed medical marijuana dispensaries open to date. Dr. Green, RX, I want to talk to you about a few points tonight. I want to talk about voters, I want to talk about tax revenue, and children. I'm going to cover them really quick, and I'm going to get to my points. The first one is the medical recommendations versus adult use. Here in Vista, Measure Z was approved by almost 54 percent. The same constituents voted for Prop 64 at almost 57 percent. They didn't really read this measure. They're coming into my store, they're upset. They don't think you're listening to them, they want to be heard. Medical marijuana, it's really up to a personal choice whether you medicate for your own personal reasons. 130 people die a day for opioids. You know how many people are coming to the stores to actually get cannabis? It's a safer alternative. Children should not have marijuana, that's for sure, but it's unfortunate that most of the marijuana or drugs come from the household. We cannot go into their houses and govern them. I'm so sorry. I feel for all the people here, for the children that get drugs, and for the people that are addicted to drugs. But marijuana is a much safer compound. It's a plant, as opposed to an opioid. Now, as far as tax revenues, I know you guys are balancing your budget, I'm sorry to hear that, based on the anticipated revenue. We're talking possibly a million dollars. It's going to go up probably $2, $3 million if you go ahead and just allow adult use, 21 and up. I have people that are working at JB Homes across the way, they want to come spend their money here for their cannabis, they don't want to get a note. They live in San Diego, they don't understand what's going on. They're pretty, they're pretty upset. I do welcome the Coalition for Drug Abuse People to talk with me about this.
You're talking to us. Hello?
No, I know, I'm just telling them to.
You're not supposed to do that.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I did not know the rules, and I apologize. But I just want to bring those up to you. These are the people that voted for you. Whether you like it or not, it's here. The sky hasn't fallen, it hasn't fallen in San Diego. So, please, I do appreciate that you guys have moved this through, and I hope that you do delivery so the people in wheelchairs and old people that can't drive can get their medicine, too. But please consider adult use. Thank you.
Okay, Gianni Ramirez?
Hi, everyone. My name is Gianni Ramirez. Thank you for taking the time to hear me out. This is my first time here. I would just like to state that I, what I'm hearing is a lot of panic, a lot of scaredness, a lot of what about the children, what about 18 and over getting it for the younger kids? The same thing applies to alcohol and cigarettes. But what do we do? We place restrictions, we place laws, we did everything that we could to possibly minimize that effect. And if we're scared about the same thing happening with cannabis, that's why we're here. These rules, we're not against them. I would say that everything in San Diego, I mean, if you look at statistics, I don't have any crazy CDC facts, but I can tell you that I have plenty of- have any crazy CDC facts, but I can tell you that I have plenty of experience. I've been working in the cannabis industry for quite a while, and I've seen a lot of what I would say older clientele. It isn't just children, it isn't your grandma, it isn't your mom anymore, it's everyone. So whether or not you're using it for your kid to treat a disease or chronic illness, I mean, I think that's personally up to that person. I'm not for children taking cannabis, obviously, but I think that as long as we place restrictions and abide by the laws, and we have constant checks, I mean, the same thing happens with alcohol and cigarettes. We do that already, and we make sure that those laws are being followed. So I see great potential, and I know that right now, the revenue isn't what you might have expected, but that's because a lot of people are mad. And by placing these rules and pushing it back further and making it so we're jumping holes, you're only pushing those people back into the black market, which is actually worse because they don't have testing, they don't have the equipment or the needs to do what regular shops are. I've heard plenty of people say that there's no places to get it tested. That's not true. San Diego has a bunch of places that they send their products to get tested. Everything comes back with a certificate of analysis. I heard a Maui Wai strain having more than said pesticides. Again, where did they get that from? Was that the black market, or was that something that's already being tested and cleaned? There's definitely a lot of vaping deaths that have happened, and I feel for those people, but it's also because they're uneducated and they're going to the black market thinking that they can get a quick fix for a lower cost. If you placed it so that people are able to go into the legal shops with a quick, easy one-two, I think that you will see a dramatic decrease in the people dying, people trying to get around and go to the black market. You push those out, and I guarantee you, everything will be just as it is with alcohol and cigarettes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's our last speaker. So Councilmember Franklin, is that from last time?
Nope.
Okay.
I just wanted to weigh in, say, just give some general thoughts and comments here. The four uses that are before us right now are testing facilities, which I think we've all agreed, if the product, the voters, the city of Vista, it was their will that the product be sold here, it certainly makes sense for testing facilities to be available so that we make sure that consumers have access to safe products. I don't think any of us disagree with that. It should be said that none of the four businesses here, excuse me, well, let me start with the testing, manufacturing, and distribution. These are not retail uses. These will not cause foot traffic, parking issues, or other issues that are associated with retail uses. And so when we consider detriment to the community or nuisance to the community, I think because these are not retail uses, we can eliminate some of those ideas. As for delivery, which is a retail and is fundamentally, you know, retail and residential, the issue and the discussion the council's been having is there are dozens, maybe hundreds, of illegal operators that will now deliver to neighborhoods in Vista, and we have our Measure Z folks who have gone through the licensing process, they've followed the rules, they've paid for their permits, and because they have a permit to protect, they are not going to break the law, hopefully, and deliver without the lawful ability to do that. So then the issue is, do we want to disadvantage our legal operators from the ability to deliver when their illegal black-market competitors are going to deliver into Vista because they're not licensed to do business here? They're already doing it, so the question is whether we want to disadvantage those who are legally doing business in Vista. So I think that's where I come down in saying, I'd rather have somebody who's licensed, who's collecting sales tax on those transactions. I'd rather have you have the ability to deliver to Vista households legally than to accept the fact that there are, on weed maps, a dozen-plus places that will deliver anywhere in the city of Vista right now against the law. So that's the issue, is, you know, how do we want to treat those legal businesses operating in the city of Vista? Manufacturing facilities, we have, again, is not a retail use. I don't believe that it's a detriment to the community. We're not allowing for volatile substances to be used in manufacturing. That would be the kind of manufacturing, the volatile uses would be the kind of manufacturing used to make some of the products that go into vaping and others. But we are suggesting that some of the illegal products could be made here, up to two businesses. And then we will come back and reanalyze how these businesses have affected the community. Distribution is the kind of business that serves legal businesses. Again, we're requesting to allow it to two distribution facilities. So, you know, I certainly support the Planning Commission's recommendation that we prohibit this use within 600 feet of residences. I think that's rightful, and I'm glad that we have a licensure, an application process that gives us the purview. Now, does that license, how often, how good is, how long is that license good for before they have to reapply?
I believe it's an annual renewal, but we'll confirm that.
And the way we would with an MUP or an SUP, do we have the force of law to close this business down if they're not compliant with the terms of our licensure?
Yes, we can suspend their license or expire their license and close them down as a result of that.
Okay.
The staff recommendation includes quarterly onsite inspections and an annual audit, all of which would require, if there was anything that wasn't within compliance with the SUP or any of the licensing requirements, corrective action, and if that wasn't made, potentially to remove the SUP.
And in the case where an SUP is not required, is there still proposed a quarterly inspection for those, what are we calling that licensure again, that's separate from the SUP?
It's called out in the proposed ordinance before you as a regulatory compliance quarterly inspection.
What nomenclature do we assign to this license that we're going to require? How do we define that or describe it?
It's a cannabis enterprise license.
Cannabis enterprise license. Okay, so all the businesses before Sierra would require cannabis enterprise license?
With the exception of delivery, which has a separate license.
Which is a separate license, okay. And these businesses will all be required to pay for the quarterly, the cost of inspection, the cost of audit?
Correct, and those fees will come back before you with the recommendation to establish fees for the cost recovery.
I do not have any further comments at this time.
Councilmember Green.
All right, I just want to echo a whole lot of what Councilmember Franklin said. I do believe that these are not detrimental to the community based off of what type of facilities that they are. I also had a question as far as how often the licenses are renewed, but I think that you answered that one. As far as the delivery goes, is there a particular requirement, and I know that we just discussed it, but I'd just like to get it out there for the public, for the actual drivers who are delivering? We do have specific requirements for everybody who's going to deliver even through our legal dispensaries, correct?
Yes, they would require a cannabis work permit, the LifeScan that we already have in place for the Measure Z employee, business employees and operators, as well as insurance on the vehicle.
Okay, and that's got to be renewed annually as well?
Correct.
Okay. And then they have the same business licensing process that every other business has, right? Where they have to report their revenues, pay based off their revenues and sales tax and all that good stuff? And we have that same regulation and jurisdiction?
Correct.
On every other business? Okay. Yeah, I think we spent a lot of time talking about what we wanted you to come up with, and I feel like based off of what you guys came up with, it's exactly what we had requested. So I would definitely agree with staff's recommendations, and I do also support the Planning Commission's recommendation of the 600 feet away from residential. I think that little corner of the business park isn't going to be affected. There's still plenty of room in Area B to put these type of establishments in, so thank you so much.
Councilmember Contreras.
I really appreciate all the work that staff has put in, especially, you know, I mean, it's just been going, this conversation has been going on for a very, very, very long time, and I'm happy to be looking at some really good direction for our city because, you know, what I'm hearing really is that the illegal market, without having this regulatory framework, is causing a lot of issues, and I think we've seen that. You know, adults and those who are seeking cannabis for medical use should have the ability to walk into a store, feel safe there, and be able to speak with individuals who are knowledgeable, so that that way they can move forward with the best medical use possible for that individual. I do agree with the Planning Commission's recommendation of the 600 feet, and I do appreciate the comments that Deputy Mayor Franklin said. I do agree with him. And at this point, I, in looking at the direction that we provided staff and what's come back, I 100% support it. I do want to state, though, that when it comes to adult-use recreational, that's definitely a conversation that I want to have, because in the same vein of when we're discussing our businesses here that are licensed within this very rigid regulatory framework, being disadvantaged, if others are able to deliver here in the city, I could see an argument that could be made regarding recreational use as well, within that line of thought. So personally, that's something that I think we need to discuss as a council, but I am 100% in favor of staff's recommendations at this point. Thank you.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you to everybody who spoke on this issue. I really appreciate hearing from all different sides on this, and I appreciate this report from staff. And as my colleagues have said, you know, we've had multiple discussions on this, we have asked staff to come back with different things for us, and I think what you have provided tonight is what we have asked for. And I think, especially the testing facilities, and I think that we are a great location for testing facilities, regardless of how many there are in other places. I think we should have some here in Vista, so I absolutely approve that, agree with that. I'm always concerned about the vaping, and we've had this conversation about the vaping, the THC and the vaping, and people have had positions on both sides of that, but I think that the argument that nobody has died from it is not an argument anymore, because there have been so many deaths just in the last couple of months. But that's not something that we can go out into the street and monitor every single solitary person that pulls out a vape to say, that can't have THC, you know, you shouldn't be vaping. But it does make me want to ask the question, because I know in our community, we have areas where smoking is prohibited. Have we updated our municipal code to include vaping in those same areas, and is that a discussion we want to have, given the fact that some of the things used in these vape devices, you know, if you're using THC on them, I don't vape, I don't smoke, I gave up smoking a long time ago after 15 years, yay me, but I don't vape, so I'm not familiar with how those fumes travel. So I would be curious to know if that is something that we needed to address as well.
The city's ordinances on the books that prohibit smoking in public places also prohibit e-cigarette products, so vapes would be included, correct?
Okay, thank you, thank you. So I agree with the Planning Commission also with the 600 feet buffer between homes. And with that, Madam Mayor, I would move to close the public hearing and move that we approve staff's recommendation in items 1 through 6 and include the 600-foot buffer as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Okay, and I would just say that I agree, actually, with all of you, and you have good comments from everybody, and my only thing, and when we say, like, within 600 feet of residential, those businesses that are there, I want to be sure that they aren't going to do any, like, some of our manufacturers have sales, like, at Christmas and different things, I want to be sure that they, and they don't sell to retail, but they'll open up and have a sale every now and then, I want to be sure that they don't open up and have a sale on that, so that would be, you know what I'm saying? Like, there's some businesses out there that do, like...
So that would be prohibited under our licensing, as well as the state laws, I believe, Mayor, so?
No, no sales.
No.
Okay, that would be, because I just want to be sure that that would not happen. And then also, can recreational be delivered, like, from the deliveries that come from outside our city, can they deliver recreational into our city, or is that against the law?
So based on the current regulations on the books through the State Bureau of Cannabis Control, delivery is allowed throughout the state.
So recreational?
Adult use and medical.
So do they have to be, because on a person, you can only have a small amount of marijuana, right? So in a delivery, do they have lots of...
There's a certain amount, it's larger than a single product, but there's a certain amount that delivery drivers can carry, that it is regulated, though.
And that be, like, licensed by the place that...
In theory, they would be licensed by the legal retailer from which they are delivering.
But it could be black-market people just delivering.
That exists regardless.
Okay, I don't like that, but I support the Planning Commission's recommendation, and I'll second the motion. Yes, Councilmember Green, sorry. Did you want to say that?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, do we vote for the moratorium in a separate motion, since we need the four or five, or is this all in one motion?
It's all one motion.
Okay, so this includes the moratorium as well.
Okay, so please cast your votes.
That motion passes unanimously. Do we close the public hearing? Okay, okay. So we'll, the next thing on our agenda is a public hearing to consider public testimony under terms of a disposition and development affordable housing agreement with solutions for change in partnership with Kingdom Development, and the public hearing is now open. Assistant City Manager, Ali Zimmerman, will introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor. With me tonight is our Housing Programs Manager, Amanda Lee. She will be providing the staff report.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and City Council members. For your consideration tonight, our four interconnected agreements with solutions for change in partnership with Kingdom Development, collectively known as The Developer, to expand their existing development at 722 California Avenue. Currently, The Developer owns or is in escrow to acquire seven parcels on the southwest corner of West California Avenue and West Los Angeles Drive. At the November 19th Planning Commission meeting, The Developer received a special use permit, site development plan with bonus density, and a tentative parcel map to consolidate the seven parcels into two parcels, and to develop two new apartment buildings with 36 residential units and an empowerment center that permits 60 emergency shelter beds. Due to various uses at the expanded campus and proposed funding sources, the development is being bifurcated into two parcels and projects. Per California state law, the city of Vista's housing funds cannot be allocated towards transitional housing or the development of an emergency shelter. The DDA, which includes housing funds and the ground lease, are applicable to Parcel One. Parcel One will consist of two new three-story residential buildings and 11-space parking units. The buildings will have a total of 36 units, which will include 18 two-bedroom units and 18 three-bedroom units. The units will have restricted incomes and rents for 99 years. Currently, the income levels will range from $32,100 to $50,917 for a family of four, and the rents will range from $533 to $1,213 monthly, depending on family size, income levels, and the number of bedrooms. The primary funding sources to construct Parcel One includes 9% tax credits, a loan from the County of San Diego's Housing Trust Fund, and a financial contribution from the commission. The financial contribution requested from the commission is $2,700,000. Similar to other commission DDAs, the commission's funding will be infused into the project only after The Developer has secured tax credits, obtained funding from the county, and renegotiated load in terms with various agencies that are applicable to Parcel Two. The county is expected to announce the awardees of their loan by... The county is expected to announce the awardees of their loan by February 2020. The Developer intends to apply for 9% tax credits in March 2020, and will be notified if they have been awarded by June 2020. Applications for the 9% tax credits in the San Diego geographic region are highly competitive. Therefore, the DDDA does provide The Developer until December 31st, 2021, to secure tax credits and other funding sources. The agreements do establish that the Commission will obtain ownership of parcel one, the Commission will lease the parcel to The Developer, and at the end of the lease term, the property and improvements will revert to the Commission. The ground lease is fiscally neutral to the development, however, it does enhance the Commission's ability to exercise any remedies to enforce the DDA, thus better protecting the Commission's interest in the development. Parcel two will include the rehabilitation of The Developer's existing 33-unit transitional housing development, parking for parcel one and two, amenities for both parcels, and will be redeveloped with an empowerment center that includes 60-bed emergency shelter. The primary funding sources for parcel two will include less competitive 4% tax credits, the county's Housing Trust Fund loan, and assumes that the city of Vista, City of Escondido, San Diego Housing and Community Development, and California Housing and Community Development will renegotiate loan terms valued at $4.3 million. Furthermore, parcel one and two are interconnected in regards to shared uses and funding. The project is infeasible without the other. Lastly, before you tonight is a relocation and replacement plan. To facilitate the proposed development, three duplexes and a nine-unit apartment building will need to be demolished and vacated by the current occupants. Under California redevelopment law, the legislative body must adopt a relocation plan and replacing housing plan prior to the displacement of residential tenants. Effective tenants will be relocated, and the relocation costs will be paid by The Developer. This concludes staff's presentation. With us tonight is Mark Kipch, our Affordable Housing Attorney, Paul Mara of KMA Associates, our Fiscal Consultant, and representatives from Solutions for Change and Kingdom Development. All of us are available to answer any questions.
Okay, I have, I think, seven speakers here. Do you want to hear the speakers first? Okay. Again, we'll start, I'll call three of you at a time, if we'll start with one and then, one at the podium, and then the other two on the side. It goes Bill DeGlas, followed by Paul Webster, followed by James Martell.
First of all, I'm a, I've been a resident of Vista for three years, and this is my very first council meeting.
Welcome.
Thank you. I came here because I've a recent volunteer for Solutions for Change. I work in their business office, and I have the luxury of only having to work part-time now for a consulting firm. So I have, in the past, volunteered for many other organizations, like Ronald McDonald House, Feeding America, Makasa, various other things. I've never been associated with such a great organization as Solutions for Change, and it's meaningful to me. I had a brother that was homeless for several years, actually, and I see here in this organization something very different. It's not just a sheltering and feeding organization, it's one that transforms lives, and they've been successful, very successful, at being able to get them back on their feet, being productive, and contributing to society. And so I believe in that very much. I wish it was available to my brother in another state. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Webster, followed by James Martell, followed by LeAnn Twig.
Well, good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council, and, by the way, Merry Christmas. Solutions for Change just celebrated its 20th anniversary of serving Vista, providing housing to homeless families and children, and providing employment, training, education, and life transformation. The item being considered tonight will move Solutions for Change expansion forward to provide more affordable housing, more facilities to educate and empower, and more opportunities to move homeless families off the streets. I would urge your support, because it creates more affordable housing and will update and expand a community asset. As you know, I've been following the council's work on the Homeless Action Plan, and the good news is, we don't need to hire any additional consultants, you don't need any other additional investment, because we've got a great homelessness prevention and solution right here in Vista that just needs your support to expand it, to serve more families, and help get more kids off the street. As I've also mentioned before, Solutions for Change Housing has a demonstrated impact of reducing crime. Our Vista Terrace property was once the single most called-on address in the city by the sheriffs, for the sheriffs. Now, the sheriff's own data show an 80% decrease in crime at Vista Terrace. Also, Solutions for Change has a 100% rate of child and family reification. That saves taxpayer money spent on CPS, and prevents the next generation of homelessness. It's a wonderful prevention strategy. Therefore, I urge the council to approve the agreement, so that the city can increase its amount of affordable housing, we can improve the neighborhood in District One, and we can expand an effective homelessness prevention program and a homelessness solution here in the city of Vista. Please support this agreement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. James Martell, followed by LeAnn Twig, followed by Tina Faison.
Good evening, everyone. My name's James Martell. I've resided in Vista for 15 years now, and I now live at Solutions for Change. The reason I'm here is I'd like you to know how much this program's impacted my life. I've changed my ways completely, and I've been to 13 other programs, and this program by far just blows me away. It's just amazing to see the people grow around you, and just the family and the commodity that we have there. And the reason I'm asking you to please accept this proposal is so I could be there to give back and just let other people in our community receive what I've received, and just be there to help and see our, our community grow, especially for the families. Thank you.
Thank you. LeAnn Twig, followed by Tina Faison, and by, followed by Monica, oh dear, Koretchen.
Hi, I'm LeAnn Twig, and I'm not a fancy speaker, but I am a program member of Solutions for Change. I came in homeless, and I'm almost graduated. I've been there for two and a half years, and I have to say that going from nothing to almost having enough money in my savings to buy my own home is where I'm at right now. So I've gone through all the different things that they needed me to do, and I have become such a success by this 1,000-day program that they've offered to me, and I know that so many other people can do it, too. I mean, I'm so proud of myself and my family and my neighbors, and what it has offered to me, and, you know, I, I would never thought that I would be where I am today, and it's, it's an amazing transformation, so, thank you.
Thank you, congratulations. Tina, and then followed by Monica.
Hello, my name is Tina Faison, and I'm a resident of Vista and a graduate from Solutions for Change. I urge the council to vote yes on the agreement between the city of Vista and Solutions for Change for affordable housing, and to expand the Solutions for Change campus. I support this agreement because I have benefited from Solutions for Change program. It has helped me address the challenges in my life that led me to homelessness, incarceration, and substance abuse. Instead of someone running around the streets, getting in trouble, and taking it from the public, I am now employed, have my children back in my custody, I pay rent, and I benefit, and I contribute to the community. The agreement between the city and Solutions for Change will create more housing for families like mine, and more facilities to serve parents and kids who are living on the streets, in their cars, or doubling up in bad living conditions. Housing is important, and this agreement will help create more affordable housing, but, not just for me, but for other families. It's more than just a roof over my head. It is creating a supportive community that helps people overcome their challenges and permanently solve those issues that led to homelessness. I urge you to approve the agreement to create more housing and support more families experiencing homelessness in Vista, as myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Monica?
Hello, I'm Monica Koretchen, and I have been a volunteer at Solutions for the last few months, and I'm just so impressed with all that they're doing. I've helped in the office, I've helped in the kid zone, and then also on the farm, and the farm is amazing, the whole, everything about it. It's just that the residents there, as well as the people that work there, is, the community is amazing, and I'm just so happy that there's something like this around for our, the homeless community, so that they have a chance to get off the street and improve their lives. And the 1,000-day program is just, to be able to get off aid of the government is awesome. So I hope you guys agree to this. Thank you.
Thank you. That's our last speaker, so I'll turn it over to Deputy Mayor Franklin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I just want to thank Ms. Lee, who has done an enormous amount of work, and all of our staff, who have put a lot of hours into this, and I also want to thank our partners at Solutions for all the, the effort that they've put into this, and all that they're doing, which is really powerful in our community. I, I think this is such an important project. We've invested in a number of housing projects during my time on the council, and immediately prior to my time on the council. This is the only one that I am, just truly feel good about, because the, the word that we kept hearing from our speakers tonight is "community," and when you go to the, when you go to Solutions and you go to the housing units that they are currently on and operating in the city of Vista, you see the community, you see some of the cleanest apartment communities that exist in our city, and that is really impressive. There is accountability, not only to the program, but also to one another, and there is a reduction, a total reduction, almost elimination, in calls for service by the sheriff, which is not what we've seen in some of our other attempts at housing projects. So when I look at the cost-benefit analysis of investing, you know, with a partner like Solutions, I just think that's so important. It's, it's about sustainability, it's about changing lives, it's about restoring dignity. We heard from some of the folks, thank you so much for sharing your stories, it's really powerful, and really helps us understand the value of what we're doing. We're really grateful for you, and we know that's tough to do. I, I think one of the things that's so important about this agreement itself is, like we do with our other housing agreements, we will eventually be the, the owners of the land. This gives us a lot of ability to, it's not just a handshake and we're done, this is a partnership for 99 years. It's a long-term partnership. Homelessness is something the council elevated to be one of its highest goals. We're spending a lot of time talking about making a difference in homelessness right now. I'm really a fan of Solutions and their approach to restoring dignity and rebuilding a person, teaching them to fish, I always talk about, rather than, like I like to say, throwing a fish and hitting him in the head and hoping it finds him well. I think it's so important to have this holistic approach, and to really help people restore themselves, and not just, not just provide the services, but provide the community that goes with it. So I'm really happy to be at this point, after several years of work on this project, and I want to, I want to go ahead and offer that we accept the DDA that's been negotiated and approve it, and is that all that we need, is a motion to approve the DDA?
The staff recommendation is on the table. If you desire to make a motion to adopt the staff recommendation, that would be sufficient.
There's five different things.
Okay, yeah, open and close the public hearing, adopt the council resolution, several resolutions.
Staff recommendation, maybe?
I'll, yeah, I'll move approval of staff. This is quite a lengthy, it's the first time we've had about a 600-page agreement in a while, so, yeah, I will approve the, the formally written, or I'll, I'll move that we approve the, the written recommendation of staff as listed in the agenda.
Councilmember Contreras.
Thank you so much, staff, Amanda, for tireless work, you know, helping Solutions for Change get to the point that we're at right now. You know, I have been a 100% in lockstep with Solutions for Change up until this moment. You know, I do have a concern, because we're, we're discussing what a good partnership it is. However, last council meeting, I was a little bit disturbed to hear one of the representatives from Solutions for Change state that municipalities are wasting their money in pursuing solutions for homelessness. So it, you know, it almost makes it seem as though the $2.7 million, or whatever the case might be, or the $150,000 that was provided to Solutions prior to me being on council, you know, words like that make it seem as though if we provide funding or grants to any other organizations outside of Solutions for Change, it's frowned upon, right? So what I just want to make sure is that, as a 501(c)(3), that what is pursued is within the purview of a 501(c)(3). You know, I'm, I don't, I'm not a big fan of inserting ideological perspectives, and so, you know, I want to take what is said at face value, which really puts me in conflict, because if, if that is held true, and it was stated that all this money that municipalities are providing is wasted, I have a real concern with that, especially when we're looking at $2.7 million that we're going to be allocating, because, you know, when I hear words like that, I look at my constituents, I look at, you know, the residents here in the city of Vista, and people work really hard for us to be able to have this public money, so that we can do something really good with it. So up until this point, you know, I have been lockstep in support of your organization, but I am really concerned when I hear verbiage like that, because I, I just don't think that's the right approach to take in it, and it's something that I have personally, and behind closed doors, when I met with individuals at Solutions for Change, I, a long time ago, said, "Hey, you know what, I, I just don't want to hear this type of commentary." I don't think that, you know, saying something like that and then requesting $2.7 million from the city, I just don't see that as a compatible relationship. So, you know, I was 100% in favor of this, but I'm, I'm starting to question whether or not the partnership can, can move forward, if these are the types of comments that are, you know, being made when y'all are thinking about, you know, how to talk to council. So I just want, want to make it very clear that I really hope you don't think that municipalities are wasting money when pursuing different solutions to address the homeless crisis that we have here in the state, here in the city. So I'm, I'm on the fence right now, to be honest with you, because of the comments that were said at the last council meeting. So I would just like to hear, you know, more from my colleagues and see where I end up landing on this one.
Councilmember Green.
All right, I definitely understand there's no, you know, one solution to homelessness, but I do definitely think that the Solutions for Change approach is a fantastic solution for change, hence the name, Solutions for Change. But I think that we obviously are going to invest our money in other areas as well, and I think that you guys would support us, so, you know, investing in other areas. But in looking at this project, and in looking at Solutions for Change, my first experience with Solutions for Change was as a PTA dad. I have four kids, and we go to Beaumont Elementary School here in Vista, right around the corner, and you guys have an aquaponics farm, and we were looking at doing a farm-to-fort program, and Vista Unified School District actually partnered with Solutions for Change, and you guys did have a farm-to-fort program. Some of us PTA got to go tour your aquaponics farm, and right now, there's actually a science garden at Beaumont Elementary School that grows food that they serve in their cafeteria, and that's something that I would have never known about, had we not had this partnership with Solutions for Change, where they come into schools, and I also did a career day with Vista Magnet Middle School, where you showed them how to... to do your aquaponics farm, and they set up a whole aquaponics, you know, farm thing. And the only reason why I bring that out is because you're not required to do that as a homeless shelter. You're not required to partner with the community. You're not required to show elementary schools and middle schools what you do and how you do it, and educate. But that's something that Solutions for Change does, that other organizations don't go the extra mile to do. And that's something that I really appreciate. The other thing that I appreciate is math. I'm a big fan of math, and I always say, "It's not magic, it's math." And when you look at the numbers, this facility costs $43,311,000. Our investment at the City of Vista, and mind you, our $2.7 million investment has 598 pages of strings to go along with it, which is a lot of stuff you have to do. But what I see when I look at these numbers is that if I give you $2.7 million, you're going to provide a service to my community, 36 affordable units that we highly, highly need, not only for our revenue numbers, but also for our community. And I also see that at the end of our 99-year partnership, guess who owns a $43 million piece of land? The City of Vista. So when I look at investing our money, and what's a good investment for my community and organizations that I work with, I feel like this particular item that I have in front of me is a fantastic benefit for my city. I love the stories of life's changed. I know, nobody's going to have 100% success story, but I haven't had anybody come up and say, "Hey, Solutions for Change is horrible, and they're lying about everything." And when you've been in business for as long as you guys have been in business, and changing lives and affecting lives for as long as you've been in business, to not have that counter, you know, culture per se against you regularly is huge. And in my opinion, it means you're doing something right. So as a council member, and as somebody who has benefited from you throughout my school district, throughout my community, and as a businessman, I look at this as something that's positive for the city. So I, with that, I would also like to second the motion to close the public hearing and accept all recommendations listed in the staff report.
Thank you. Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I do want to say thank you to everybody who came out tonight to speak on this issue. I appreciate hearing everything that you say, and I do absolutely recognize the value that Solutions has had on the community. And I appreciate Mr. Webster, I lost track of where you went to, but I appreciate your comments earlier when you said that we don't need to go anywhere else because you have all the programs to help everything. I appreciate, you said, you know, we didn't need to pull other things in, but actually we do, because Solutions doesn't help all of the demographics of the homeless that we have in our community. So I still recognize that as, as good as the community is behind Solutions, we do still have other things. So I, I just wanted to make that point. Our homeless population has increased over the years. We need to work harder on working with our homeless population and all the demographics. And Solutions does not serve all of the demographics in our homeless population. Out of our 598-page agenda report, there was something in here that I, I don't know if we have an answer to. On page five, third, let me see, page five. "In addition to the commission loans, Solutions for Change received loans totaling $3,553,312 from the City of Escondido, the San Diego Housing and Community Development, and the California Housing and Community Development. For the entire development to proceed, since both projects are interdependent, the developer must either negotiate to extend, restructure, eliminate, or modify their current loan obligations. The restructure of the loans provides assurances to the investors that there are no near-term accelerations and/or scheduled debt service payments that would interfere with the projected cash flow reflected in the pro forma. At this time, staff has not received confirmation that the other identified agencies have agreed to the new loans. Do we know why we have not received this information?"
Some, I know Escondido was waiting for the City of Vista to complete the development before they moved forward, I mean, the pro forma, so we did submit the pro forma to them. With the other two agencies, which is the State of California and the county, I'm not, I would have to defer to Solutions about where they're at with that particular status.
So my question is, my second question is, for this to go forward, we need to have this item, and we don't have it. And this has been an issue with Solutions in the past, when we've tried to do things and not had all of, all of the ducks in a row, all the, all the boxes checked. So if we don't have what we need for this to go forward, why are we having this discussion right now?
Well, there are a lot of times with most of our DDAs, our developers need additional steps. Our money is usually infused, our, the negotiation is infused upfront, but then our money is put in way later, as you could tell from the staff report. But like 9% tax credits are not usually provided before we negotiate the terms. This is a little bit more different than any other project that we've gone through. We haven't had this many different funding sources going in, where there has to be this many different negotiations. But at this particular time, for them to be able to go in and be proactive with getting other funding sources, they did need a commitment from the city to have some little portion financially contributed.
Okay. But we still anticipate...
Yeah, the project cannot, the, at this point, what we're doing with the DDA is we're reserving the $2.7 million for Solutions for Change. They have until December 21st, 31st, 2020, to be able to secure all the other funding sources, 2021, I'm sorry. If they do not secure the other funding sources by that particular time, then, you know, then the DDA is over and the money will not be infused into the project.
Okay. We'll keep a close eye on that one. I'm going to back up to page three regarding the parking on this. And I understand the State of California has their rules and what we can and cannot do for parking. But the parking for this project, I'm just going to say this in my out-loud voice, is wholly inadequate, even though the state allows it. Mass transit, contrary to what the state wants, or Sandag wants us to believe, mass transit is not the chosen choice of transportation for a great majority of the population, which is why ridership never goes over 4% of the population. It doesn't increase, it rotates. Studies have shown repeatedly that when people have access to a car, they save their money, they're able to get a car, they do, and they're off public transit. So the ridership of transit rotates, it's, it's a revolving door, it doesn't increase ridership. So having this next to the transit center, I appreciate that the state likes that and doesn't require parking. But the reality of what we face already in our city is that developments that don't have adequate parking for the development, contrary, regardless of what the state or Sandag or anybody says, they're still going to have cars, and they're going to be pushing out their parking into the communities around them, into the neighborhoods. And that creates a lot of problems for us throughout our city. We get complaints on it almost every single day. So I, even though, and I understand that you're trying to work this project and how it works best for you land-wise and usage-wise, but with the parking and the problems that we already have in the community that we're talking about all the time, I'm disappointed that you would go with the minimum number of parking required in a community that shows such grace and love to the organization. So I was just hoping that you would do a little bit more on the parking. But I understand that you don't have to. So on my next question, I have several pages of notes, please bear with me. On page 189 of staff report, it says that, this is the whole section on management of the rental project. It starts on page 186, but if you flip over to page 189, one of the items that is talked about in the management of the rental project is gross mismanagement. And it says, "During the required covenant period and in the event of gross mismanagement," and there are several things that are defined, "of the development, the executive director shall have and retain the authority to direct and require any condition act or inactions of gross mismanagement to cease or to be corrected." And it goes on and on, and then it lists out some things. And under that heading, subsection I says, "Fraud or embezzlement of development funds, including without limitation to funds and development funds in the reserve accounts." So I was wondering what other funds, because it seems to me if we're going to have an issue with somebody committing fraud and embezzlement, I would have an issue with them committing fraud or embezzlement with any of the monies that they've been given, not just monies in the development fund. Am I missing a disconnect here?
No, you're not missing a disconnect. This is fairly standard language that you would see in all DDAs, where the city is retaining the property, and therefore, along with our infusion of funding, we also have a lot of other controls. This language is standard and was negotiated between the city, the commission and the developer, but it's standard language.
So that, and I appreciate that. I just think, I don't care what money they're embezzling or having fraud with, I'd have an issue with that. So I don't know if we can clarify that language to clean it up a little bit. I wouldn't want it to say that only if they had bad behavior with the money that the City of Vista itself put into it, because if they're having bad behavior on any level, it speaks to the whole project and the whole thing. So that just, that just stood out for me there.
Councilwoman, if I might?
Yes.
The money that we're putting in is for the development aspect of it, not necessarily the operations and maintenance, and that's why it's spelled out, for the development money, because that's where we have skin in the game.
I, I understand that. I'm just, it just seems to me if there's any fraud or embezzlement on any level, we should have some serious reservations and step back from the project at all. I wouldn't want it just to be identified if they had bad behavior with this pot of money because it affected us. I think if there's bad behavior, it affects the whole project and, and us, no matter where, where, what the pot of money is. There are a lot of other comments out of 598 pages. But I agree with my colleague about the comment that was made, there have been some comments made behind the scenes that don't always marry up with the public face and the public ask, and that's always of concern for me. So, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Franklin.
Well, I kind of wanted to elaborate on the concept of the land ownership and why that's important, because I touted it, but I didn't kind of say why it's important. It does give us the ability to demand accountability in the management of the project, and it gives, I always say, I look at things from at least a 40-year perspective. I hope to be here in 40 years. I know I won't be serving on the council in 40 years, but I want to look back at decisions that we made and be really proud of the things that we did. I want to see developments in neighborhoods that we approved really succeeding. And there is always, you know, there's always a question about housing projects and whether they'll be well-maintained into the future. And that's why I think it's so important that we will retain the kinds of safeguards and controls, is it will give future administration here at the city and future councils the ability to demand accountability from, from future managers at Solutions. And if the project changes hands, it gives us a lot of, a lot of power to demand good behavior. The way this development agreement is structured, our, our money would be the last money in, isn't that right?
Yes, that is correct.
So what we're really doing here is reserving our funds, and the, you know, the onus is on Chris and his team at Solutions to go out and secure the rest of the funding. But, but our promise to reserve these funds and our promise to contribute them after a negotiated set of, of terms has occurred, is what's going to give them ultimately the ability to go out and negotiate for investments from others. So it's really critical to the project. One of the other things that hadn't been mentioned yet is, and one of the genesis of, of where we're at tonight, is Chris came before us, I don't know, it was a year or two years ago now, it's, and wanted to expand the, and kind of build this project at the location on Vista Way, which is in District 1. And we, at the time, were very, the council did not look favorably on that proposal. And so one of the things that we hope to achieve is, and is required, I believe, by this agreement, is that Solutions would, would sell that property. And I know we had at least one gentleman in the room tonight that was thinking about some commercial development there. We have a very real opportunity in front of us to have a redevelopment in District 1 that is desperately needed, and I think that's a really important part of this as well, that I think would, would really, and it's right on the district line with District 2. So it'll benefit residents there in the north part of the city with new jobs and a cleaner appearance, get that old City Hall building of ours that's almost right on the sidewalk. Hopefully, we'll be able to prove something with a little bit more setback and something that'll really be a benefit to the community there. And that's something that we'll accomplish by moving this agreement forward. And only because we're not giving them another opportunity to speak for themselves, I just wanted to say, on their behalf, I, I think, I think what I heard in some of the comments that you referenced was more a, a feeling of which way is best to invest in to help people. And certainly, we have, all of us, a lot of disagreement about which way is best to help people. There's no question about that. Good, honest people disagree about the right way to, to help people. The one thing we can all agree on is that we all do want to help people. And when it comes to this problem, because I truly feel that the correct magic bullet solution doesn't exist, when you talk about a problem as big as homelessness, all the solutions have to be on the table, and they all have to be discussed. And we won't agree on all of them, but the thing that I know about this particular program is, there are people who are really investing a lot of their time on a volunteer basis, even those people who are staff members, you know, I've, I've known a lot of them for a long time, and I know that if they chose, they would have great opportunities in the private sector, but their, their heart and their passion is, is in helping people and helping the kids that get helped by this program. And so, you know, that's one thing I've always been passionate about, is preserving the purview of people who make their career, they give their time and their passion to something that they feel is changing the world. That's where I really want to free those people to do it their way, because if you take from them the ability to do it their way, it diminishes their feeling that they're, they're doing something, and their belief that it's getting done, things done the right way. But, you know, like I said, all the solutions have to be on the table, they all have to be discussed, and they all have to be given a fair hearing, and, and be approached with an open mind and an open heart. But despite whatever missteps in rhetoric they may have had, I just, I want you to think, please, about the, the kids that will be helped, that will live in this facility. And, and I know we all feel good that we were a small part of, of making that happen because there are families that, you know, these facilities will change their lives. And I think we're going to feel really good about that. So I would just ask a little bit of maybe forgiveness for, you know, for zeal and exuberance, and, and I hope you would support the project.
To get back to the project, I will make a couple of comments here. So there's a lot of moving parts to this project, and there's a lot, a lot of the loans and the grants depend on our city approval. We're the very first to get in there, and once we give our approval, they still have a lot to go through on this project, a lot of, a lot of different grants and things. So I'm going to, I'm going to support the planning, planning commission recommendation. But, and as far as the parking goes, I noticed in here that the development requires 78 parking spaces, 78, but they're doing 108 surface parking spaces, which I agree aren't enough, but the, the state has changed the Forba Housing rules, and so they, anything within a half mile of the transits, you know, they can reduce the parking requirements to a half of a space per bedroom. So, and they're actually doing more than they, they have to do. But I agree with you... But I agree with you, Councilmember, that there, I always like more parking, because I think the parking overflows onto the street, and there's no parking on the street there. And so I, I agree, that's, it's going to be short parking, but I, I think the state has taken that, that away from us. So anyway, so I want to thank Amanda Lee, you've done, I know you've done a lot on this project and worked a lot of hours on this project, and so I want to thank you for all the time you've put in on it. And with that, I will call in Councilmember Contreras.
Thank you. I really appreciate having this type of discussion. You know, like I said, I was lockstep in favor of this project as it's been before me, and I was in the audience, not a council member, but in the audience when the East Vista Way project was discussed. And so, and, and I know, we have a serious crisis in our community with homelessness. And, you know, I, I recently had a panel on youth and young adult homelessness, and one of the, the big asks was, you know, we need to have more shelters for families as well. Again, to kind of echo Councilmember Rigby, it, it is not the only solution, or else we would have seen a decrease, significant decrease, in our homeless population here in Vista, with all the great work that Solutions for Change has done. But I am really concerned, because this is, it's not just one instance of this type of rhetoric, it is ongoing. And so I just want to make it very clear that in the world of a 501(c)(3), when you're asking a body, the city council, to help partner up with you, and you're requesting millions of dollars, that, you know, there's some kind of recognition of the partnership and the fact that this program is not the only thing that can be invested in to decrease the amount of housing insecurity that we have in our community. So I just want to make that very clear. But I do understand the need for it, and this is in District One, and that corner of, you know, West Los, West Los Angeles, West California, it needs some help with pedestrian safety improvements, but, you know, there's also the fact that we have to remove X amount of people from there. Okay, it's getting them placed somewhere else, there's funding for that, I get that. But this is so involved, and I understand that we need to, if Solutions is going to move forward with this very complicated project, that, you know, we have to say yes to it. I don't want to be someone who says no to more shelter, because I have been up here, you know, advocating very hard for a, a good toolset for our city to have, right? Different solutions. What I would ask is that for organizations that are, you know, continuously requesting support, so that they can grow their successful programs, that there is a recognition that they are not the only ones in this ecosystem of solutions. Okay, so I just want to make that very clear, because if I continue to hear this, I, I'm going to continue to question whether the partnership is a good one or not, if it's a good fit or not. So, but, you know, I've been out to the farm, I think it's fantastic. I've had good conversations with Mr. Meggison and Mr. Webster, but I've also been very clear about where I stand when it comes to the way that other programs are characterized. I, I just don't think that we need to even go there, we can just focus on what good the organization is doing and not add some of these other things that might be more appropriate for a 501(c)(4). So I, again, I really appreciate this discussion, and this is, this is a tough one for me, because my value system is such that I'm like, yeah, we need more, we need more here in the city of Vista to help our families that are struggling. I do have a question regarding, you know, since this is going to be drawn out a little bit further, how much, how much is it that the city has invested in staff time or funds for us to get to this point right now?
Approximately $100,000.
So, $100,000. So again, I just want to belabor the point that we need to ensure that the ecosystem of solutions, which Solutions for Change is a, is a really, you know, big part of that, but it's not the only thing, and we have already invested about $100,000 just to get to this point. So I think the city has been a great partner, and I just want to make sure that's reciprocated. Thank you.
Okay, so we have, I see no more speakers, we have a motion and a second, so I'll ask you to please cast your votes. That motion passes with one no vote. With that, we have, move on to our discussion items, and we have two discussion items this evening. The first one is appointment of a deputy mayor. The first item is the appointment of a deputy.
Public hearing three.
Oh, we did? I forgot one? Oh, dang. I must have put it away unconsciously. Hold on. But I'm not in a hurry or anything. Public hearing two. Here it is. Public hearing three. This public hearing has received public comment on the city's 2018 regional transport. Wait, everybody. Okay, we'll start over here. This public hearing has received public comment on the city's 2018 Regional Transportation Improvement Program Amendment Number Nine. Public hearing is now open. Assistant City Manager Ellie Zimmerman will introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor. Our senior management analyst, Sarah Taylor, will present the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This report is on the Ninth Amendment to the 2018 Regional Transportation Improvement Program, known as the RTIP. The RTIP is Sandag's program that includes proposed projects for transit improvement in the San Diego region, including projects that are eligible for the Transnet funding. Transnet is a countywide voter-approved, half-cent sales tax distributed to local agencies based on population and miles maintained. Sandag uses the RTIP similar to how we use our budget, our CAP budget document. There are two Vista projects that are included in this Ninth Amendment to the RTIP. This slide shows the Transnet programming changes for these projects. This amendment aligns our RTIP programming for these projects with the Five-Year Capital Improvement Program budget and city council-approved budget amendments. Sandag requires each local agency to hold a public hearing for Transnet programming changes and for a resolution to be approved by the city council for each amendment before any updates to the RTIP are accepted. This concludes my presentation. We are available to answer any questions.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to say thank you for, for this, and I would move that we close the public hearing and adopt the resolution approving the amendment to the Transnet Local Street Improvement Program for projects for fiscal years 2019 through 2023.
Before we go on, I, I have a speaker. So Matt.
Yeah, that presentation wasn't much to go on, to be honest. So I'm just going to revert back to, you know, what I was talking about earlier, just those of you who are on the, the transportation boards, just to sort of, to take those and fight as hard as you can for Vista. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Green.
I'd just like to second Councilmember Rigby's motion to close the public hearing and accept the staff's recommendations.
Okay, seeing no more speakers, I ask you to cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. And now, I think we go to discussion items, right? Now I'm going to, okay, there's two discussion items this evening. The first one is D1 is the appointment of a deputy mayor. The first item is to appoint a deputy mayor for a one-year term. So it's open for nominations from our council. Councilmember Green.
I move that deputy mayor for the 2020, 2021 year be Deputy Mayor Amanda Rigby.
Okay, do you have a second for that?
Let's second that.
Okay. Seeing no other discussion, I'm asking you to, to vote? We vote, right? Yes, cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. So congratulations, Councilmember Rigby, Deputy Mayor Rigby. I gotta, I gotta change my, my wording here. Okay, so the next thing is, Item D2 is Community Gardens and Biodiversity Hot Spots. Councilmember Contreras asked for this item to put on the agenda, so I'll ask her to introduce the item.
All right. You know, I really appreciate everybody who's here to take a look at this, this item. Let me pull it up. Now, the, the one thing that I just want to say is I have heard from people all over the city, every single district, how much they want community gardens. What I haven't heard is a discussion about it. So first and foremost, I want to allow the public the opportunity to let us know what their ideas are, and also for us as a city to share what some possible obstacles are, and take a look at, you know, if we can overcome any of those obstacles. And if not, that's why I added the concept of biodiversity hotspots. So just to define community garden, so that way we're all on the same level here. I, I thought the CDC had a really good definition. So community gardens are collaborative projects on shared open spaces where participants share in the maintenance and products of the garden, including healthful and affordable fresh fruits and vegetables. Gardens may offer physical and mental health benefits by providing opportunities to eat healthy, fresh fruits and vegetables, engage in physical activity, skill-building, and creating green space, beautify vacant lots, which I think, you know, driving around Vista, walking around Vista, we definitely see the potential for beautification, and that is one of our council goals. Revitalize communities in industrial areas, revive and beautify public parks, create green rooftops, that one might be a little bit of a stretch, unless maybe we want to do it here somehow. Decrease violence in some neighborhoods and improve social well-being through strengthening, strengthening social connections. Okay, so when I'm talking about community garden, that's what I'm looking at. That's the picture that I'm painting. Now, biodiversity hotspots, there is actually a definition for it, I didn't want to be pretentious and make my own definition, but the definition is on a macro scale, and we're really looking at a micro scale here, just at the city level, not, you know, this huge bio-region of multiple countries, or whatever the case might be. So I define biodiversity hotspots as the purposeful planting of California native plants and other site-suitable plants that provide native and migratory species the opportunity to forage and thrive in an increasingly urbanized environment, which, that last part, increasingly urbanized environment, is something that we see here in the city, right? We're becoming more dense, we're seeing a reduction of open space, you know, and, and when open space is on private land, well, I mean, there's not so much we can do, right? Property owners have rights that we need to respect. However, we do have a considerable amount, whether we look at, you know, a small little strip or a bigger parcel, but we do have, as public land, the opportunity to not have to even purchase additional property, to either pursue a community garden, or if that is too difficult to do, for whichever reason, we have, you know, the ability to at least make this vacant lot look nicer. When we're talking about site-suitable plants, we're looking at California natives that are drought tolerant. You know, we are blessed here in San Diego County to have a ton of different microclimates here in the city of Vista, the climatic wonderland. There is no reason why we cannot beautify our city with either implementing a community garden component and/or biodiversity hotspot component. You know, one of the things that I see, we have a really small city, right? Like 18 square miles, big population. Why are people going to come to Vista? We've always talked about, and I've heard, you know, Vista is a destination city, or we want it to become a destination city. Well, I can tell you one thing, that people will be coming to Vista to see biodiversity hotspots. I know that because, believe it or not, birding, which is going out and looking for birds, right? It's actually one of the biggest pastimes here in the United States. We have the Audubon, which is on county land, I believe, you know, and they see people going out birding. I mean, you could, we could literally think of having a city of birding and brews, you know? I mean, why, why are we not thinking about how to, how to kind of overlay beautification with biodiversity, with, you know, the businesses that we have here, and with the attraction that nature itself brings, especially in, in such an active area like San Diego County? You know, people are out as much as they can, they're out physically exercising, going on, on hikes. So I want to leave it up for discussion, and if there are any individuals who want to speak on it, but I would like to hear your thoughts.
I have several speakers.
Perfect. I would love to hear the speakers and then hear from my colleagues.
So do the same thing, one, one person at the, and two of you over here standing on the side. So we'll start with Sharon, oh dear, looks like Al bistaki? Okay, and, and followed by Kathleen Boyle and Mary Jo Poole.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. You already know I'm Sharon Al bistaki. I want to speak on behalf of the community gardens. When I lived in Santa Monica for many, many years, there was a huge community garden on the border between Santa Monica and West LA, Ocean View Farms, and I was a participant in that garden for more than 12 years, and I can't tell you the wonderful benefits to both communities and to all the individuals and families, and children. Children today, you've read books, I'm sure, on nature deprivation for children. Families would have their gardens there, and they would bring their children, and they'd be pushing them around in the wheelbarrows while they were, the gardens would make their own compost, and the kids would help us wheel the wheelbarrows over there to collect the compost, and, and the, the garden was leased, the land was leased from the city, and the members would pay for our water and our garden keys so other people couldn't come into the garden and raid our, our patches or anything like that, but it would be on an annual fee, and it was, it was nominal. We had an executive committee to handle complaints among gardens, gardeners, and also to discuss things that needed to be attended to in the garden. People would pay in labor for the, the paths, to keep the paths clean, to work in the compost, because the city would donate manure from the mounted horse community, you know, the mounted horse police that would be in the parades and all of that stuff. So we got their manure, but that had to be mixed with other- So, we got their manure, but that had to be mixed with other organic material. And so, there would be committees that, once a month, would work in the gardens to clear the paths, work on the compost. Monthly, there would be a potluck where we could discuss anything that needed to be done. There would be a place where we could exchange plants and seeds. And we had an orchard. People could also pay their service dues working in the orchard. We had two orchards. We even had a big old macadamia tree. I don't know if anybody could crack the nuts, but we had them. And I worked a lot in the orchards, so we had fruit. And people from all of the members of the community could partake of the fruit, a hand, two hands full at a time. That was all that they were allowed, so that everyone had a chance to have fruit from our own trees. And we had speakers come to, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Kathleen Boyle, followed by Mary Jo Poole, followed by Peola Illeskus.
Hi, good evening. I'm going to do my own timing too. I used to live near that garden and drove by it almost every day, and it was up on a hill a little bit, and no matter what time of year, there was always, of course, something different going on. It was always great to see the plots and how some people kept those, they're doing this, and other people are doing things, so. Okay, so in addition to nutrition, community gardens have a long history of helping in many other ways. When I was in graduate school many years ago, one of my colleagues was a vet with PTSD. And he used to go, I was at UCLA, so the West LA VA was near us. He used to go over there for staff services, and they had their own garden. It was kind of like a hobby garden. And he realized that, and so he was doing that, and he realized his PTSD was so much better. He actually was part of a pilot program. I can't say he started it, but he was part of a pilot program for vets with PTSD to do gardening, and it had great success. And there's a whole line of research. I just looked up quickly tonight. 10 reasons why gardening, especially community gardening, is good. Some of these were not what you'd think about, or I didn't think about. Practicing acceptance, which I know as a horribly failed gardener, like, ah, killed another one. So, practicing acceptance and kind of learning, moving beyond perfectionism. Social benefits of a community garden, connecting to the natural world. So, you have to be aware, we are more, I think, I think here maybe more so than in the bigger cities or places like LA, we're more in touch with our natural world, but still, like, where is the sun coming during the winter? Is it going to hit that patch of ground? Oh, no, it's not. So, getting your hands in the dirt, what is the rain cycle? The Japanese have an expression, bathing, forest bathing. And there's a growing body of research that you don't even have to garden, just being out in, in nature has benefits, including better recovery from surgery. That's a pretty definitive, not subjective data point. Better recovery from surgery, less anxiety, less depression. I'm losing my time. Being present, people in the gardens, people with the gardens. I'm, I'm, oh no, here's one thing I don't, don't want to forget. Being in the present, if you're fighting depression, you're fixated on the past. If you're fighting anxiety, you're overwhelmed by the future. With gardening, you're in the, you're more in the present. You might be looking forward to your crops and, and sorry about the thing you just killed, but you're in the present. You're working with the dirt, and you're in the, in the present. A meta-analysis, okay, and then I would like to have a community meeting where we could all just talk and have a give and take. So, we're not going to come after you like the villagers after Frankenstein with torches and things. I think we just want to have, this is not a controversial topic, so we could have open discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Jo Poole, followed by Peola, followed by Samara, Ziamara. What is that?
Hello, so yeah, so it's hard to tell. Never know what I'm going to say when I come up here, but I'd like to follow the theme of what you all have been talking about, about building community, building healthy community. And I was thinking, as I was listening to people talk, I've been part of two community gardens, one at UCSB when I was an undergrad there, and it was a great experience, right? Helped with those fresh vegetables to get us through to the end of, you know, until the next student loans came out, which is a whole different story. But anyways, so, and then also the one here locally at Vista, Benita Juarez Gardens. You know, my husband, before he passed away, we spent many, 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 I'm going to get emotional, days there, building community, right? And the resources that are in this community, and the Latino community specifically, are amazing. People who could grow anything out of a rock, seriously. And they are so underestimated in this community. You know, community gardens, as Kathleen said, there's documentation. It relieves depression. It's meditative, right? There's just, you know, you can grow healthy pesticide-free food, right? We're talking about pestif- side-free, pesticide-free cannabis. What about pesticide-free food, right? This helps, you know, when my husband passed away, and, you know, with stagnation of wages, the community garden here provided my family, my daughter and I, with salad, beets, you know, Swiss chard, you know, for probably six or seven weeks. It helped me stretch my budget out. You know, you all have extraordinary power up here, right? And I truly believe that all of you want the best for people in our community. But with your power, you also have the ability to impact people in their daily lives by providing the space and the resources to beautify their community, to grow fresh food, to connect back to the earth, to practice their cultural, culture, you know, you know, preferences and things from, from homes, right, where they've, they miss. My husband, the first community garden, my husband was from Brazil. You think I'm a mess? You know, he's like, he was like wild, right? And he just took seeds and just threw them, and he's like, oh, that's a Brazilian garden, right? And that meant so much to him, and to be able to grow collard greens, because that was something he grew up on, right? So, I just hope that you will all see it in your hearts and understand your extraordinary power, that you can help feed people. It's not enabling people, it's enabling them to eat, that's all, and to survive. So, thank you.
Thank you. Peola Illeskus, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, followed by Ziamara Diaz and Carol Jeffries.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Paola Illeskus. I come here on behalf of a Healthy Vista Coalition and also a Poder Popular group. As some of you might know, and if you don't, Poder Popular is a legacy longstanding community group that is rooted in Townsite. So, Poder Popular has been one of the community groups that has been observing that, asking and observing the need for community gardens in and around Vista, specifically in the Townsite neighborhood. We really believe that community gardens and also other creative forms of urban agricultural practices or solutions can provide opportunity for low-cost redevelopment. So, hearing beautification, right, hearing that this can provide an opportunity for a low-cost redevelopment for neighborhoods that like Townsite themselves and beautifying those small spaces. And also, it provides a potential for economic vitality. So, one of the, my favorite gardens that I like to visit is Mount Hope Garden out in southeast San Diego. They have this program, this type of program called Good Food District, where they grow their own veggies, their own fruits, and they sell to their, they sell those veggies and fruits to their local businesses and neighboring businesses. So, it's something really magnetic, but also economically vital for, for the neighborhood that exists there. And lastly, community gardens really do help with the environmental degradation that we are seeing today. It really helps stave that off and also overall support a healthy local ecology and economy. And so, really do count on us, Poder Popular and Healthy Vista Coalition, to provide the support to really have these community gardens or other forms of urban agriculture come to fruition. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. My pronouns is Ziamara Diaz, and then followed by Carol Jeffries.
Hello, my name is Ziamara Diaz, and I am a resident of Vista and a member of Poder Popular. I really think a community garden will be wonderful and support a healthier and more beautiful Vista. Currently, I have a small plot at Vista High School, but not every family has a kid that goes to Vista High School. Community gardens bring families together and build healthier communities which would be welcomed in neighborhoods like Townsite. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Carol Jeffries.
Hi. So, Karina paints a beautiful picture for me, makes me feel happy inside. Think about greenery and beautification and biodiversity. Last year, a couple of years ago, my kids and I went to tour Google up in Irvine, and I walked away with this dystopian nightmare where they want to pave over everything, mine every precious metal out of the earth and create isolated robotic pods for everything, and it just made me, ugh, feel horrible. So, this is an antidote to that horrible picture that I came away with. In real, in real life, people thrive in shared spaces, and people need trees and soil and health and air, and all those things can be provided by community gardens. People have talked about, you know, having local food and opportunities to learn about gardening and just to be healthy mentally and physically. And that people find real purpose in gardening, and it can change lives. A lot of these things I've written down, and we've already talked about, but what, another thing that a community gardens can do is it can create agency for people to be part of their community and to make the community, to be stewards of that space and to be there and to populate our outdoor spaces. Instead of everybody driving into their garage and closing up behind them and watching TV all night, we need people to be outside. It's a healthy thing. And in a similar way that public art and public libraries make people feel like they're part of this space, so do public gardens. Cicero said, "If you have a garden and a library, you have everything you need." And I think we need more of the gardens. We have a great library. It's a wonderful space. The library is one of the only places you can go in your community where you can just go and be, and there's no expectation for you to buy, buy anything or do anything. You can just be there. And I would love to see more outdoor spaces like that, where we can just go and be and soak it in and maybe see some wildlife. And the biodiversity hotspots too is also very important. We need more wildlife corridors and things like that too, so just want to tack that on the end. Thank you.
Thank you. That's our last speaker, so I'll go to Deputy Mayor Franklin. When does Deputy Mayor, is it now?
No.
It's not now, okay.
I'll relinquish it early, I don't mind.
Okay, I'll keep you with your title.
I just want to say I, I support the, the idea of a community garden and the biodiversity hotspots. Would like to hear more. I wonder, can we use park development funds to pay for a water meter? Could we consider this to be a public park?
Under certain circumstances, I believe park development fees could be used.
So, I'd be curious to know if there's a parcel of land that could be identified that would be suitable? And what, the staff drafted this list of questions, is that right?
Yeah, you're referring to the community guarding considerations?
Yeah.
And working with a community group from Vista Community Clinic, staff did provide those considerations, which dealt with, for the audience, business model, property ownership, policies and rules, selection of users, as well as maintenance and security.
Did, I know we're having discussion about the Vista Community Clinic land for another reason, but did anybody approach them and ask them if they'd be willing to sponsor a community garden on their land across the street from their building?
Hey, you're referring to the land on Vale Terrace. I'm not, I'm not aware if they have explored that land for a community garden or not.
That's a thought. It's certainly aligned with their goals and be a way for them to purpose the land for a period of time in which they're not able to, to build on it. But I, I just would be supportive of the council encouraging staff to answer some of these questions and so that we could, you know, I generally like the idea. I'm a failed gardener in many respects in my own backyard, but I certainly enjoy it. I've killed more than I've grown, but it's a lot of fun. And certainly want everybody to be able to enjoy gardening. And I like the idea of, you know, proactively cultivate biodiversity. I'm a committed conservationist. My, one of my heroes, Theodore Roosevelt, the father of conservationism. You know, I believe in being in the outdoors and, and being good stewards of the outdoors, and I think the biodiversity hotspot would be, would be part of that. So, that might be fun to have, and, you know, the, the folks at VID might even be willing to partner with us in some way on these projects, so maybe we should reach out to them. I certainly could talk to some of my colleagues there, former colleagues.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I think community gardens are great, and I, I liked the quote that you brought up. I think you said it was Cicero, "Libraries and gardens, and you have all you need." In a previous iteration of my life, I was actually a librarian, and so I appreciate that. And a gardener with experiencing my own joys and frustrations, and the many frustrations in my garden made each joy that much sweeter. So, I appreciate what your comment was too. I have visited the Benita Juarez Gardens here a couple of times, been over there to do things, and then also took a tour of some of the community gardens down in San Diego. A couple of years ago, the state of California was offering tax incentives for property owners to put in a community garden. And I touted my little red wagon all over town, trying to get private property owners and owners of some of these vacant parcels to step up and donate it or work with the city for, for a community garden in return to get tax credits from the state. And there wasn't a single taker. Nobody was interested in doing it. So, I am absolutely in favor of trying to see what we can get, if we can get some traction on a community garden at this point. I do know that, that Vista Community Clinic was going to be talking to us about something with their parcel. And this seems like it would be in theme with what they were asking, or what they are going to ask or have asked. And it could be a conversation to have with them, because I think that would be a great place. So, I'm absolutely in support of seeing what we can do to facilitate a community garden in our city.
Before I go back to Councilmember Contreras, I don't know, like, the city, if we should take the lead on this? Or there's like nonprofits and churches and schools that have land? I know that there's, there's a church, is it the, is it the Presbyterian, what's the church out on, by Sprouts? Presbyterian, yeah, Grace Presbyterian, that's what I was going to, yeah. So, they have a really nice community garden out there, and I know there's the one on Benita Juarez over there. So, but maybe some of the churches or the schools have a lot of land too, and some of them have little gardens, but maybe they would donate some land for a community garden. So, I just would like to, you know, as well as looking at the community clinic, other nonprofits, other churches, and maybe some of the schools to look at for, for, for land. So, that would be my thoughts on it out. And so, Councilmember Contreras, I'll put it back to you, and then Councilmember Green wanted to talk to.
And certainly, Mayor Ritter, looking at, you know, different areas of opportunity where we can establish a community garden or biodiversity hotspots, looking at private land. You know, I think that's great. We do have public land, though. We, the city does have certain parcels that could be dedicated to this. And again, also, you know, maybe if it's a smaller parcel, depending on where it's at, maybe we have some wild flowers there, you know? Maybe we have, we, we look at what can be done that's site-suitable. You know, one of the things I requested from staff was a list of, of city-owned parcels. I got a little bit. I didn't get the full thing. So, one thing I would like to see, because I have no problem taking time, going through a full list of city-owned property. And, you know, I'm not a whiz at GIS or anything like that, but I think I could figure out how to use the system and how to take a look at this parcel and see, you know, maybe this one's not a good one. I don't mind doing the filtering for that, whatever the case might be. But we definitely have public land available. Maybe not a ton, where it's like an acre plus, right? But, you know, one of the considerations that, that we should look into when discussing community gardens as well is just accessibility. gardens as well is just accessibility and how far it is from a residential area that might, you know, want to use it. Because I don't want to set it up for failure where, you know, it's just, we found this piece of land, but no one really lives around it or no one that lives around that land is actually interested. So, I do want to have some kind of correlation between the location and who is looking to use it, right? But I think there's a lot of questions that we need answered, and I am really delighted to hear from my colleagues that, you know, there wants, we want to have an exploration of how we can pursue biodiversity and community gardens here in the city. So, and I think we do, we have to look at every single thing because there is a cost associated to it. And, you know, when we're looking at running it, you know, I would be in favor of a nonprofit taking, taking the reins of managing it. And perhaps, you know, we are a financial partner in the sense that, you know, maybe we're the ones who fund the hooking up of the water and stuff like that, but, you know, the day-to-day operations are maintained by a different organization. So, you know, I did provide staff with a list of a few questions, and I really thank staff for taking a look at that and providing us with some answers. It is part of the public record, so you can take a look at the agenda report for this item, and the question and answers are listed there. But I think it's great to hear that, you know, we want to explore this as a possibility. So, thank you.
Councilmember Green?
All right, so I'm definitely down for exploring it and checking it out. Obviously, my idea was a little bit more of maybe setting up like a grant program for the community gardens or biodiversity hotspots. My main concern is from liability aspect, and I know those are questions that we're going to need to have answered, as far as what type of access do we have to provide for ADA, and if somebody gets hurt while they're gardening there. I mean, people do get injured when they're been moving big plants and digging. I mean, I don't shovel very often, but as far as what our liability is. So, I like the idea of a nonprofit. When you put something on city land, that's where I figure like we have more liability. So, I think offering a grant program would be a better approach just because it kind of takes our liability out of it, and then it says, "Hey, everybody, we have free money here for community gardens." You know, maybe we pay the money to put a water meter on the, you know, Vista Community Clinic's lot. I mean, maybe there's a reason why they're not doing it. So, but like I say, I think it was a good item brought forward. It's definitely a nonpartisan issue. It's something that'll beautify our city and something that we can all come together for, that we can definitely help our citizens out with. So, I'd like to see the information, but I definitely want to approach it cautiously from a liability and cost standpoint per se. So, that's where I'm at.
I would also say that we need to think about, like, how do you choose the people who, if they, if they don't pay their bill, do you have to have a fence around it? You know, I mean, there's, on the, you know, public property, can you really fence something and keep some of the people out if it's on city land? And there's, there's a lot of questions to, you know, that, so I would just, okay, so Councilmember Contreras?
Yeah, I mean, there are tons of questions regarding this, so, you know, I think it's going to warrant at minimum one other discussion, right, where we're looking at what answers we get back from staff regarding liability. I don't know if perhaps, you know, that was a concern of mine as well. I did have a conversation with our city manager regarding that, and it didn't seem as though it would be as much of an issue as I initially thought. I don't know if perhaps there's a granule of information regarding liability that we can address at this time in this discussion.
I think it's best to probably come back to you with a lot of information that we've been able to research.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Franklin?
Councilwoman Green, I liked what you had to say. That was a smart idea with the grant concept, and Councilwoman can, I agree with what you were saying about having a nonprofit involved, and I like the idea of, I was, and, you know, it's like when the, when the art festival, you know, and I encouraged them and I contributed to them, and I said, "Go out and raise the money. There are people who will give. Maybe we can help. Maybe we should do a matching grant fund." But I like the idea of having private ownership and operation, and I definitely like the idea of having private governance of it, like, you know, wherever it is, they elect their own board, and somebody's got to be in charge, and they're not calling the Parks Department on Sunday morning because somebody ate their tomatoes. You know, it's got to be somebody else's, you know, they've got to, they've got to self-govern it. So, but, but if we could be the catalyst to get it going, I think that'd be cool.
So, do you have enough information?
I do.
Yes, okay. Okay, with that, oh, that's our last discussion item. Okay, we're, for sure, we have, we have one speaker in oral communication, so Cindy Odoman? Is Cindy still here?
Cassie, thank you, Mayor, and a council member for this opportunity to speak. Just hearing about the community garden was like a fresh breath of air, just sounds so wonderful. What I wanted to speak today is that I wanted to congratulate Corina Contreras on her first year anniversary. I want to thank you very much for your hard work on behalf of our district and the whole city of Vista. I am thankful for your thoughtful and insightful views that you bring to this chamber. It is clear to me that you've done your research and come prepared to this meetings. I really appreciate that. Also, I'm especially thankful, thankful for your effort to stay in touch with our community by holding monthly inclusive town halls, by providing translation service to the Spanish-speaking members. Town halls have been inspiring as you start the, start each meetings by recognizing special community members for their leadership. Also, when having the city staff come speak to have, come speak to us have been very educational. I want to express my gratitude for your ability to listen to the needs of our community. It is very much needed and very much appreciated. It is also important for us to know that our views matter. My heartfelt thanks, and keep up the great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will, good job, council member. Actually, everybody's celebrating an anniversary. So, I'll go on from there. So, I have some mayor comments, and then I'll go on down the line for you guys. So, the city is still collecting new unwrapped toys or gift cards for its adopted marine unit and their families. The drop-off boxes are located here in the Civic Center lobby and at Jim Porter Recreation Center through December 24th, so we still have another good couple of weeks before that. The Wave Water Park is holding its annual Penguin Plunge this Saturday, December 14th from 2:00 to 4:00. Is Councilmember Green going to do the, this year? Are you going to do it again this year?
Sorry, yes.
You did it last year, right. So, you can come and watch Councilmember Green and the Penguin Plunge this Saturday, December 14th from 2:00 to 4:00. The event's free, and participants will receive a free 2020 Wave admission ticket. That's why you're doing it, isn't it? Construction on the new traffic signal on Bo Beere Drive at Goodwin Drive near Vista High School has begun. A new diagonal crossing at Bo Beere and Panther Way will be added to accommodate the high volume, the high volume of school pedestrians. So, construction will be completed in the spring, but for a while, there's going to be construction going on there for that new traffic signal at Bo Beere and Goodwin. If you're leaving town for the holidays, call the Vista Sheriff's Senior Patrol to schedule a free vacation home check, and they'll come by and check your home and be sure everything is good. Their number is 760-940-4434. Again, 760-940-4434. And this is our last council meeting of the year, so happy holidays, everybody, and happy new year. Oh, my gosh, it's coming fast, isn't it? So, okay, with that, I will go on down the line to, I'll start with Councilmember Rigby. Almost to be Deputy Mayor.
Thank you to everybody who came out tonight and all of you who are still here. We don't usually have a lot of people left at the end of the meeting. So, I want to say thank you for coming out and participating in our meeting and speaking to us if you did. And I want to say thank you to staff for all the hard work that you do, not just on behalf of us, but on behalf of our entire city. And Merry Christmas to everybody, and I wish you all a very happy new year.
Deputy Mayor Franklin?
Just Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and Happy Holidays to everybody. Thanks for a great year.
Councilmember Green?
So, yes, I 100% will be doing the polar bear plunge on Saturday. I do trunkey, no wet suit, no nothing. I'm hardcore, so feel free to come down. You want to see a chubby dude go down a water slide and scream real loud at the end? This guy is available for that. Number two, I just want to take a moment to thank our engineering planning department, specifically our traffic engineering department. I live off of Foothill and Vista Way over there, and recently they've made some changes where now we have two left-hand turns on a few different lights down there, and it has really helped out with the left-hand turns in the morning, the school traffic, just the restriping of those roads and the additions of those turn lanes have been huge. So, thank you so much, and also, they were so responsive with my car smashing potholes and things after all those rains. They got them all fixed. Public Works, props to you. Coon and the boys, thank you. You guys are prime time out there. But I just want to thank traffic engineer. I mean, we do a lot to make sure we have proper infrastructure in the city, and once those two left-hand turn lanes open up on Foothill at least, being able to get out of Chevron in the mornings on your way to Vista High School, I mean, it's, it's made a huge difference. So, you guys are making a difference, you're doing good work. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Contreras?
Really good discussion today, thank you. Our last council meeting of the year, it was a good one. I want to wish everybody the merriest of holidays, and also, just remind, hopefully, rain won't be a situation on Wednesday morning, but every single Wednesday morning, we have a group of volunteers that get together at Luzduran Park. We start walking at 9:00 AM, and we just pick up trash till about 11:00, 11:30. And I want to thank staff because, you know, sometimes on our walks, we encounter like a lot of trash in an area, and we don't want to have to lug that all the way back, so we, I put in a request for a special pickup, and, and it happens, so. And, and you know, the really great thing is that, I mean, I love my car, and, you know, it's, it hurts me to say that because I'm like, oh, this environmentalist, but I love driving my car. So, I don't always get the perspective of a pedestrian, but going out with this volunteer group has forced me to have, you know, my eyes in a different situation, looking at, at the infrastructure differently. And, you know, we've, as we're walking, we'll make a list if we run into something that, you know, could be fixed. And again, thank you so much, staff, Public Works, for, you know, taking on this challenge of this ever-growing list, and whether it's a little minor tweak or, you know, red curbing that needs to get done, it's all being reviewed, and we've seen a significant amount of change. So, I'm just really thankful for the city and, and the community that I live in because people just give so much of their time to make sure that Vista is the best that it can be, including my colleagues. So, everybody have a really fantastic rest of your 2019. 2020 is coming, and I look forward to talking about community gardens and biodiversity hotspots again. So, everybody have a good one.
And I forgot to mention, we had our parade on Saturday in the rain. But it wasn't a heavy rain, it was like a nice mist. Still got you wet, but it was, and we had lots of people out there. I was surprised, all their umbrellas, and Joe did, Councilmember Green did a great job of announcing. I heard that he made everybody feel very welcome and, and, you know, did, ad-libbed a little when the people were going by, and said he, they said he knew a lot of people. I heard good reports from you, so you did a great job with that. So, okay, I'll move this on to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of updates. So, we were going to show Elf last Saturday night at the Moonlight, but we anticipated the rain, and we were going to provide snow, and so we decided to postpone that to Friday night, which is December 13th. So, if anybody has purchased tickets for Elf for the past weekend, they can use those this Friday night, the 13th, and if they cannot use those, they can go to Vistix and get a refund. So, no problem there. City offices will be closed from December 25th to January 1st, so if you have trash between Christmas week and New Year's week, it'll be set back for one day. And we do have two lots in town that will take trees, if you'd like to dispose of your natural tree. Those two lots, one will be at Shadow Ridge and Melrose, and the other lot will be off of Bercentile on South Santa Fe, and they will be available from December 26th to January 6th. And so, there's more information on the city's website for that. I want to say congratulations and goodbye to Tony Winnie, who is our assistant to the city manager. Tony is going to become, after the first of the year, the assistant city manager for the city of National City. So, it's a promotion for Tony and a great opportunity, and Tony's done a great job with the city for the last five years currently, and he was here before in 2007 for a couple of years, and Tony's been a great member of the team, and so I just want to wish Tony the best of luck in National City. And close out by saying happy holidays and happy birthday to Theron Dykman, our Parks and Community Service Director, whose birthday was on Sunday, and Kevin Hamm, whose birthday is tomorrow.
Tomorrow, right.
And then, I don't want to miss anybody, and this guy right here, our city attorney, his birthday is on December 30th. So, happy holidays, happy birthdays to the three of you.
Okay. City Attorney, do you have anything tonight?
Just the happiest of holiday wishes. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody, everybody. Thank you.
And that means everybody. How about our city clerk, Kathy?
I would also like to wish everyone happy holidays and also Happy New Year.
How about Claire down there? Same, the same, okay. And I'd like to wish everybody happy holidays, Merry Christmas, have a great kind of a vacation. I'm sure some of us aren't working all the time, so have a good vacation, everybody, okay? We're adjourned.